Calling the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, December 19th, 2022. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. We have a full house tonight. We are going to start with the board and administrative role calls. Mr. Felton, here. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Ms. Neaton?
Here.
Welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Henin?
Here.
Mr. Gertner?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Gronseth?
Here.
Ms. Dimmler?
Here.
Mr. Veal?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is public comments, but we have not received any prior to the meeting tonight, so we are going to move on to our first discussion and action item, which is a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
Motion made by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, the consent agenda, which includes the regular school board minutes from November 28th, 2022, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Move approval as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, the consent agenda, which includes the regular school board minutes from November 28th, 2022, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Move approval as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now on to the fun stuff. Item four, recognition, presentations, and showcase. First bullet point, I know we want to thank the choir for coming in and serenading us prior. They've had a... They left. They have a concert tonight, right?
Seven o'clock concert, yes.
All right. So it's nice that they came out beforehand and sang.
Absolutely.
So, moving on. Mr. Samansky.
Thank you. This is always an exciting time of the year. This could be a great habit to get into, and it's been a lot of fun this last couple of years. Lots of thank yous, lots of congratulations this year, and we'll just kind of start off with, we don't have our entire football team here. We've got conflicts, we've got work conflicts, we've got a choir concert, so very, very busy. Successful people are always very active, so we're thankful for the ones that are here, and we'll recognize the entire team. But first, I want to start off with a couple of the Coach of the Year awards. These are done by Coach's Association, the votes of their peers, which is always very exciting. It's always very great to be recognized by your peers. The Section 6A Assistant Coach of the Year for the... For girls soccer was Brandon Coates. The Section 6A Assistant Coach of the Year in boys soccer, Amy Fuhr. And she is not able to be here, so send Jonah to look at that. I'm going to change up the order just a little bit, which will make it easier for us a little bit. The East Central South District Assistant Coach of the Year, Mr. John Roswell. And then this one is very exciting. I don't know how much Coach Phillips is going to talk about kind of the last couple of years, but this truly was a lot of fun. Looking back three years ago and just thinking where we were and where we're at now, it's night and day. Coach Phillips deserves a ton of credit. He's done a great job. He's a Pied Piper, which is one of the reasons why we hired him. It's interesting, most football programs that I've been involved with, when you have a bad year, you lose kids. And kids get hurt, kids spend a lot of time in the training room, and it just sort of, as the year goes on, it's just more and more difficult. Even while we were struggling, and you saw some good signs, but we were struggling, we were gaining kids, which is very strange. And when you take a look, that foundation of doing things the right way while we were struggling led to these last couple of years. So Friday night has been fun. Friday night has been a lot of fun these last couple of years, and that's very exciting. But the East Central South District Coach of the Year, Coach Andrew Phillips.
Thank you. Yes, it's been a lot of fun the last couple of years. Many of you sat here five years ago when we talked about whether or not we should co-op, maybe just one. But anyways, I was here and a few others. And as you know, obviously, that didn't happen, and here we are today. A little bit about our season this year, we went 11-2, played in the sections... Or the state semifinals down at US Bank Stadium. Just a little information about kind of where we've been. Five years ago, we were 0-9. Four years ago, we were 0-9. Then we won two games, then we won seven. This year, we won 11. In the last two years, our team has a record of 18-5. The five teams we've lost to have all played in the state semifinals. Two of them have won the state championships. So we're competing right there at the top with the guys in our class. So we're going to honor some of our players that are here tonight, so I'm going to read off everyone. When your name's called, come on up. Albert Rundell.
Stephen Duskey.
Oh, perfect.
Ben Baumann. Ben Ragnar. Ashton Hexel. Brett Lee. Tyler Thurston. Keegan Brassington. Nathaniel Grimsley. Ian Baru. Reese Illes. Patrick Duskey. Nick Andersstrom. Jason Fenske. Joseph Meyer. John Mueller. Justin Kind. Landon Meyer. Ganon Lee. Nathan Behrens. Isaiah Wasser. Michael Foley. Lucas Dreyer. Christian Semaya. Teddy Lohman. Will Otto. Matthew Bertram. Paige Cosmatzka. Jagger Baird. Deacon O'Brien. Trevor Lang. Kyler Burmeister. Dane Kaiser. Brandon Coles. Brock Shug. Jordan Olson. Isaac Osley. Matthew Isaacson. William Mant. Tristan Johnsrud. Noah Leitner. Ella Dreyer. Jordan Mishka. Jack McGinnis. Noah Ryan. Brady Johnson. Thank you, guys.
I was going to say, don't go anywhere. I'm sure Ms. Hewan's probably going to want a picture.
If... Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Since you pointed me out earlier in your discussion, I just want to thank you as well, Coach, and all the players for a great season. As you said, I was here when things were 0-9, 0-9, 2-7, so it was fun to be here for the good times. There has clearly been a... And no disrespect to any of the previous coaches, but there has clearly been a culture change. I see the things on social media with the kids in the weight room, and granted, you know, social media's grown so much, but we just didn't see that. And even sitting here and listening to you read off name after name that weren't able to be here, I remember not that long ago where there was barely enough kids to field two sides of the ball. So congratulations on a great season and hopefully a continued great career here at Watertown.
Thank you.
We've got so many awards here, I can't even keep things straight. So we'll have to pretend.
Yes.
Some of the all-state recipients. This is, again, voted on through Coach's Association. This is a tremendous honor, and what this really shows is that our programs and our athletes are being recognized not only within the conference, but at a state level. So congratulations to all our coaches and to our recipients of these all-state awards. In girls soccer, we had Mercedes Burmeister and Lindsay Penagor for all-state girls soccer. And in boys soccer, Jonah Hamburger and Tucker Ritter. Last two awards, we have the last two High School League awards, the Excel Award. And what the Excel Award is, it's the excellence in community, education, and leadership. It's a unique recognition program by the High School League. It is for juniors who are active in school activities and leadership at their schools. It is very heavy on outside stuff that you do. So the leadership, if you're involved in Sunday School, if you're involved in FFA, if you're involved in all sorts of things, it's important to put that down. And they also demonstrate strong commitment to community service. The criteria is to be a junior, making satisfactory progress towards graduation, and they easily are. Participate in High School League Fine Arts and/or athletic activities, hold leadership positions in their school, volunteer in their community, and meet the general eligibility requirements for the High School League. The selection process, sort of how this goes, the selection process for the Excel, how we handle it, and the AAA is similar. The first thing we do, we start this probably in late October, we send out the information to the high school faculty and say nominate. And they send back names, and we get quite a few names, and then it's the selection committee's turn to take a look at the names nominated and to kind of narrow that out. This year, it is very, very difficult, just like in every year, it's been very difficult. You know, one of the things, we've got very good coaches, and part of the success that we have, and I just want to give credit to the kids that we have right now. As mentioned earlier, these kids spend a lot of time in the weight room. They spend a lot of time on the fields. They spend a lot of time improving their skills. And this is really where the, you know, the showing off with all their hard work is all about. So the teachers nominate, the committee gets together and selects, and then after that, it's passed on to the High School League. The Excel Award recipients are selected by an independent panel of judges from schools throughout Minnesota. Award recipients will be announced via league website on February 6th. And where they will be recognized in two areas. If you're going to be watching the state tournament this year, I think it's mainly the girls basketball tournament on 45 TV, all of a sudden, you'll see their bio pop up, their picture, and there's their bio, and you'll be, all of a sudden, hey, there's Lindsay, I know her. So that's very exciting. And they'll also have an on-court award ceremony for all of them at the... On the Class AA Championship Game, Girls Basketball, and I'm not sure exactly which Saturday that is, but that's in March. And roughly, there are 32 or 36 finalists in the Excel Award. So all the names go in from all the high schools, the High School League narrows it down to 32 or 36, and that's basically where it ends. So you receive that, they don't narrow it down any farther than that. So it's still quite a group, it's still quite a feat to be nominated. So with that, the Excel Award winners, Lindsay Penagor and Nathan Behrens. And the last one, the High School League AAA Award. It stands for Academics, Arts, and Athletics. It's commonly known as the AAA Award. It honors high school seniors throughout the state who have a 3.0 or higher grade point average, and who participate in league-sponsored athletic and fine arts activities. Now, the criteria is a little bit different with the AAA compared to the Excel. If it is a non-high school league activity, it's not... That doesn't help you on... For the criteria. They're only looking for high school league stuff. So you could be in musical, and unfortunately, you can't put that down, that doesn't help you in this. You can be in speech, or you can be in music, or you can be in choir, going to contests and that, that's what they're looking for. It's the high school league stuff. Nomination criteria, be a high school senior, 3.0 GPA, at least one league-sponsored athletic or fine arts program, comply with the High School League's Code of Conduct, complete the application, and meet all the deadlines. And all of the candidates that we selected meet... Easily meet these qualifications. The selection process, recipients are selected through a multi-level process involving member schools in the league, the league's administrative regions, and the special committees of educators, business leaders, and members from the fine arts and athletic communities will do the selecting. The first stage of this, they will go up against others in our region, our sub-region, 17, I want to say Wednesday, the 18th, in January, up at Maple Lake. They'll have a chance to go up and read their bios, and the judges will take a look at them, they'll see them on paper, they'll see them in person, and then the group will narrow that down to one male, one female, to represent our sub-region. Then they'll go on to the region competition, the 25th of January, up in St. Cloud, and then with that, the final male and final female go on to the High School League, and then they make their selection. This is a little bit different, where they do narrow it down to one male and one female throughout the state. And with that, there are 32 finalists, but it does get narrowed down. The statewide award winner, a girl and boy from Class A and AA schools, will receive a four-year, $1,000 scholarship. So it's a big deal. And again, the process was the same for us. Teachers nominate, they nominated, and then the hard part for the selection committee, narrowing it down and selecting who our recipients are. So for this year, our recipients for the AAA, Clara Mant, Clara Mant, and Albert Rundell. That's just fine. Any questions?
Yeah. Nathan. Nathan.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Samansky. And you guys don't have to stay unless you want to hang out for the rest of the business.
No one wants to stay for the riveting information.
Hi. So how many people in the DTC do you see?
It's a disaster.
Really? That bad?
Yeah. It's ugly. Trembling.
It doesn't sound like it's going to get any better the rest of this week.
What, is it the end of the week?
Yeah, it's supposed to be like a lizard.
Yay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you made it in one piece and avoided the ditches.
Yeah, I did avoid the ditches. Thank goodness.
I'm not sure why I'm receiving all these tickets, but...
Hold your phone, there's...
Yeah, anybody want admission to a home and building and remodeling expo?
All right. Continuing on with our action items.
L&amp;L Exhibition Management in Charlotte, North Carolina.
The first item that we have, item A, the first and only read of district policy form requiring review. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, last month, we reviewed the policy 722, and you had approved that. That's a data request policy. We took another month to just get legal, our legal folks to take a look at this and give it a once-over. So the policy... The form you see in front of you, this was the original after legal review. We've changed it considerably. I shouldn't say considerably, we revised it to a point where it's a much more streamlined process. Mrs. Hewan did a really nice job of just, again, simplifying it, getting the data that's really necessary on there, and you can kind of see how it lays out. So again, when someone does request, this is the document that we will use moving forward, and it has passed the sniff test, if you will, from our legal counsel, so.
Move to approve Policy 722-F as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion on the form? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B, resolution to combine polling places. Mr. Schuler.
Yeah, tonight, Mr. Chair, we bring forth a resolution combining polling places. You probably asked me, well, why? The election's over, and why are we going back to this? This is just one of those pieces of resolution that you try to get out in front of in the event that we... In this case, there is no election coming up. We're not running a referendum at this point in time. So the reason we put this out, in the event that a board member would leave and we have to fill a term, and we have to go through an election process to do that, this simplifies the process and only allows... Gives us the opportunity to do the polling in two places, the community center here, the City Hall in Watertown, and then the Mayor Community Center. This is a huge cost savings, is really the main reason why we do this. If you were to go to all the townships that you see listed there, essentially, you know, the cost would be very significant. So by combining these townships into one location, or two locations, excuse me, it really saves the district a lot of money in the event that we would have to go to an election. Does that make sense?
And is this something that we have to do annually? I can't remember.
It is, it's something that we would recommend doing annually. Last year, we think we did in January, we were a little behind last year on that, so this year, we're getting it to you a little bit earlier, so, after the election, of course, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, I'll second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Felton, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, 2324 School Year Calendar, first reading. Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chair, this is the first read of our school year 2324 calendar. We've spent some time with that. Mr. Rundell from the Teachers Association, along with Mr. Henin and I, have taken an opportunity to review this. We... It's as an initial draft, there will be a final copy in front of you next month for the second and final read, but again, nothing really stands out in terms of differences in the calendar. You can kind of see, it's pretty traditional with the spring break lying that last weekend March is, it's traditionally been here in Watertown, Mer. We would end on May 30th with students, teachers would come back then for the Friday, the 31st, and Monday, the 3rd, to finish out their contractual year. Yeah, so pretty straightforward. You can see some of the conferences' dates listed in there at this point in time. Yeah, any questions, things that you're wondering about?
I know the end of the quarter happens in January, but I'm looking at January, and we've got three weeks that have Mondays without school, which yay for families that want to take vacation, long weekends, but it just seems a little... I know, I mean, this year, it falls on a Monday and Friday they're off, so there's three days of school in Monday weeks.
Yeah, and honestly, you don't love three-day weeks. I guess in education, that doesn't make a lot of sense, so we tried to work this where the first lie, you know, is on a Monday, obviously, that's a little trickier, the 16th with Martin Luther King Day, and then obviously, the 22nd with a workshop day. It wasn't ideal, but yeah, you're looking at three Mondays in a row.
What are the dates that are in red? February 12th, 22nd? I don't see anything on the key on the left. Just the dates are in red?
Like the numbers, because there's a few months that have...
There's middle school and high school conferences that day, on the 12th.
So what is the other red dates for the...
So the 22nd is also a conference date?
Oh, all the reds are conferences.
Oh, okay. Yeah. No, I see.
Yeah. And there will be a grayscale at final draft, too, just so you know. Just not for this time.
Thank you.
And we've maintained the no half-days, just the full?
At this time, yeah, we're not going back to the early releases. Right. There's certainly discussion, I think, at some point to revisit that, maybe going with a late-start approach. Not in this particular calendar, but I know behind the scenes, we've talked about that a little bit.
So in lieu of those, is there a date that you selected to fulfill those, like, early release, or not? In this case, because of the way dates lie, like...
Right.
I think they're holidays. Full development days, right?
So previously, we had four of those two-hour days, essentially, so that equaled one PD day. So I think we plopped that PD day back, and we did the same thing this So I think we plopped that PD day back, and we did the same thing this year. I think that extra PD day.
Oh, it should be March twenty-second, which you don't have highlighted.
April one.
April one, there it is, thank you.
Oh, okay.
It's a little lighter colored, but that is where the PD, essentially, that was the four.
Because on this side here, you have March twenty-second as a staff development full day, but it's not on the calendar.
Yeah.
That's probably an error.
Okay.
Yep. Good catch.
That's why it's the first slide. It's first read, right? So the April first would be as the, okay. Got it.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the first read of the calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the calendar with the March twenty-second edit.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. On to the review and information items. You got to wake up there. Mr. Vogel.
All right. Feel like I've been, I haven't been here for a little while.
We missed you.
Because you haven't.
Um, so to start off with, I just did basically this first slide to kind of give an update. So right now, um, we have open claims. For the marmolium and carpeting, we actually have an open claim with both the installer and the manufacturer for those items. And then the tile is just an open claim with the installer. So those are still, I will say, ongoing. We've made good progress on the tile and are actually choosing kind of the final design to fix the issue that we had with the cracked wall tile in the girls' restrooms throughout the middle school. And then are essentially still in conversations with the installers slash manufacturer for both marmolium and carpeting. So that's our, essentially, our main middle school hallway floors and then the majority of carpet used throughout the middle school and the high school, actually. The marmolium is essentially coming down to both an installation and a product issue from what they used under, kind of as a leveling surface. And then the carpeting is more along the lines of just a manufacturing defect that we happen to be a part of. And then I also put on here for any remaining kind of outstanding punch list items, warranty items from those first rounds of projects. Our goal is to have those completed over winter break. So we've had contractors, a few contractors in the last couple of weeks that have done some items, and then we have a pretty large crew that's also going to include some of the locker room punches as well that are going to get completed here in the next week and then over winter break. For the locker room projects, um, I did actually have one update here from my previous, because I created this last week, but our lockers did not ship out from the plant on Friday. So the product is, was, um, they were scheduled to be made and, and get shipped out on Friday. The new product is actually scheduled to arrive on the twenty-second, um, and then they'll be ready to ship the first week of January with the installers. Right now, on schedule for the third week of January, but I'm trying to line up a different crew than what we currently have to move that up as, as far as possible. And then we did go around with Cunningham, or I went around with Cunningham, and we created the punch list for the locker rooms, both the middle school and the high school. And so, as I said, the contractors have actually been ramping up to complete most of those items over winter break. For the, uh, I did, I did put a note down here. The BAC has been aware, but I just wanted everybody else to be aware as well. We have basically some, um, I'll call it installation conditions that we're not really happy with, both from the masonry walls, their final appearance, and then the epoxy flooring that's throughout there. We currently have been withholding payment from those contractors until they present a better idea of how to fix those issues. For the epoxy flooring, we're going to give them one kind of last attempt to fix that. Otherwise, we're going to bring in a different contractor and actually redo a majority of it. And for the masonry walls, instead of letting the contractor come up with a solution, we're just going to give them one that we decide through the BAC. So we've been working with Cunningham to kind of give, uh, three options, if you will, and, and the BAC committee is going to essentially make a decision on what we'll be doing, either accepting as-is and taking a credit or, or applying some different finishes over those walls to make them look better, so. And then I did have, um, I think, I just wanted to give a little bit more information on kind of where we're sitting from, it doesn't really, I didn't include it in this version, but, um, I did prepare just some numbers on essentially over the course of the 2019 bond projects. We've had about two million dollars and change orders throughout all twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars that we've used or spent. About forty percent of that came from owner changes and a lot of, large portion of those was from the district office additions and then from some stadium additions. We made the scoreboard larger, gave it a lot of features, and then did a bigger crow's nest, things like that. About forty percent of it was from existing conditions, so things that we encountered. Again, there was a pretty large one out in the stadium, and we uncovered some unsuitable soils at eighteen feet deep, um, and then just other existing conditions that you experienced throughout demolition of the projects. And then about the last twenty percent was from design changes or code changes after we had sent the plans through review and comment from our, our authorities having jurisdiction. So all in all, over those two million dollars in changes, um, we, or ICS, reduced those by about two-hundred-and-forty grand. So that was kind of our, our overall cost savings through, through those projects. And that's through, I took those numbers from basically our seven large projects that we've done over the course of the three years, so. Design and construction schedules, the only thing that we have that's not currently on here will obviously be our, our future greenhouse design. And then as we are completing the, or as we reach next spring, we'll also be closing out our, our site work and stadium projects with their final round of landscaping punches throughout the year. Uh, I think my last one. So we are getting, as you can see, very close to our end. A lot of the numbers actually that are held open in construction right now are essentially monies that we're holding back from other contractors that we do have those open claims with or have open issues with. And then essentially just paying out any additional, wrapping up design fees, wrapping up ICS fees, and then will be pretty much spent out. Any questions?
So what's all expected to be done over the winter break?
Uh, a slew of things.
Maybe just punch list items?
Yeah, yep, so, um, we've kind of, or I've categorized it into, into three different groups. We have open punch list items that are just from contractors that have, for lack of a better word, walked away. We have warranty items that was tied to their work. And then we just have, um, just some open items that are just essentially either asks or work that was just never completed. It doesn't really qualify as a punch, it was just, um, you know, missed, for lack of a better word. So I think throughout the middle school and elementary, um, there's about sixty different items. And then the locker room project, we had a total of like two-hundred-and-forty punches, but a lot of those are similar. You know, there could be thirty paint touch-ups, um, you know, uh, kind of grouped together. So, um, again, my goal is, aside from any lingering locker room punches, as those were, you know, they have a, typically a thirty-day window to complete those, my goal is to have all of our outstanding punches from previous projects, which would be the elementary school project, the locker room projects, there's the middle school, high school renovation projects to be completed by January second when kids return.
Um, and I also know that there's, for lack of a better term, an open house for the swimming locker rooms.
Okay.
Um, maybe you need to kind of connect with Ms. Dimler on the, down the dates, because we don't want to have an open house and not have the right lockers in there.
Yeah.
So it would be great if we can get that done by the time that open house is, but...
Perfect. Absolutely.
Anything else for Mr. Vogel?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chris.
Uh, moving on to the admin reports. Mr. Henan.
Few things, I guess, just to start out with. By next month, we'll have our registration book for twenty-three, twenty-four done. Right now, they're in the process of just proposing new classes. I think there are up to seven new classes proposed by teachers. Just to give you an idea, once they're proposed, I take the time to meet with them and we kind of go through logistics and then, again, get a feel if they're going to be offered or not. There's not a guarantee that they will be, but I think that the teachers have done a really good job of trying to identify, again, classes that have maybe run their course, and then looking at new ideas that are matching the trends of our kids, which leads in the second point. Darren asked me to meet with some kids to talk about strategic planning, and he was part of two of the three groups I met with. There were seventy-five total kids, juniors and seniors, and they were, I mean, ranging from kids who were going to go in the workplace, two-year schools, four-year schools, and we asked them two questions really. One is, what do you think the vision or what do you think the main purpose of schooling, you know, Watertown Mayor's school should be? And then what do we need to emphasize to get there? And it was really, really clear, I mean, I think Darren, you saw this too, is that, I mean, the, the, the main focus for them should be is to get them ready for the next part of their life. And it really didn't matter whether it was for a workplace, colleges, jobs, I mean, they were very focused that that was the main thing, and then make sure that we provide them opportunities, whether that be classes, you know, extracurriculars, you name it, you know, clubs, that they can work on those skills. It was really, really interesting to see that, again, no matter what the class was, that's what they focused on. And again, they gave us some really good feedback and they really appreciated the wide, again, we had kids that say, some kids say the work experience was the most important thing we have. And then the next group would say, college and the schools courses are something you cannot get rid of, you know? So it really did depend on the kid. But it was, it made me feel good that, that our wide array of classes is, is what's important to them. And they talked about that, that the choices they have really made them feel good, but they also gave us some really good ideas of things maybe that we don't have yet, you know, and that we need to continue to offer more and more, you know, mentorship opportunities and things like that. So again, really good feedback, and I think, you know, help, it helps me at least continue to talk with teachers and staff about, you know, here's why we need to continue to go in the direction we're going. And then the last point kind of affirms this. Darren and I and Mr. Josh and Mr. Stow went up to St. Michael last month. Resource training provides these CTE opportunities for, to learn more about trainings. And one of the people that are involved, his name is Patrick Walsh, he was the Hutch principal for a while, he's the Belgrade superintendent now. He is really big in the CTE programs. And, um, he wanted, we submitted, a bunch of us submitted our master schedule to him and he does some analysis of it, and he got back to me yesterday, actually, with a bunch of questions, and his two comments were, he goes, number one, he goes, "I'm really, really impressed with your commitment to CTE and career focus in your schools." He goes, "That's not something I normally see for a school your size." And the second comment was, he goes, "You should be really proud of your staff," because he goes, "You have a lot of staff members teaching out of their, necessarily their curricular area." And he pointed out like math, he goes, "Is that a math teacher teaching career life planning?" I'm like, "Yeah, it is." "Is that a PE teacher teaching this?" I'm like, "Yep." And, you know, so that's a credit to our staff that, you know, I mean, I got one of them in here, Mr. Rundell, he, he doesn't teach just math. So that, but that goes a long way, because if we had to follow only, if they only stuck in their just pure licensure area, our kids would be deprived of a lot of classes. So it's just a credit to our staff that, that they do the things they do. So just reaffirming again that, and again, just the commitment we have to CTE programming is something we should be proud of. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerton.
Good evening, everybody. Couple of things just to talk about and touch on. December has been a month with a lot of training for staff, specifically two areas. We're still really working hard to make sure all our staff have mental health training. We ran through a round of that with our seventh and eighth grade teachers earlier this fall, and we're wrapping that up with fifth and sixth grade. And then we'll do another round with our specialists. So that has been very useful. We have a therapist, a social worker, and a psychologist working in our building right now. And so as we're kind of working through interventions for kids and talking about mental health, uh, some of these kind of foundational understandings are really important, so I think staff are finding that very valuable. Uh, the second thing is really working with staff on educating them on how to work with kids on diversity. As our school evolves, our student population evolves, it's working with the staff and helping them understand that our role, a big part of our role is to create the environment that supports the current student population that we have and looking, you know, beyond just skin color and things of that nature and looking at all these different identity markers, we call them. So it's just been really a good journey for myself, too, as a principal, good conversations. We'll eventually be reaching out to talk with kids and community members, too, just to make sure everybody feels good about their school, they feel safe, they feel like they belong. So I'm just kind of moving forward with that. Couple of other real quick things. We have a band concert tonight, you knew that, which a couple of us are going to head out to in just a little bit. And then I want to recognize our student council. December has been a, a month of giving, and the student council just did a wonderful job of working with our staff, our families and our kids. They raised about five-hundred-and-forty dollars and also brought in a hundred and two toys for Toys for Tots. So just really awesome stuff going on there. We're thankful for the generosity and the leadership of our kids. So that's all I have. Any questions or comments from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell.
The first update is this week, we are having a spirit week, just to have a little bit of fun, hence my attire today. Today's theme was over the river and through the woods, so everyone wore camouflage. Tomorrow, we have plaid. Wednesday is candy cane colors and Thursday is pajama day. Last week's staff had one only, but we didn't invite students to participate in that one just because it was a little more involved. We, the flex learning day threw off some of our activities. That day was supposed to be the holiday ho, ho, ho down in country western attire. So this week is just a little more simple with clothes that students have at home so they can all participate and join in the fun. We continue to work hard implementing the new learning that we've had from the letters training that we've been going through since the spring. We're seeing that yield really good results in our progress monitoring assessments of students with reading needs, and we're really excited and expecting to see great growth on our winter fast bridge screening, which takes place as soon as we return from winter break. That first two weeks that we return is when that window opens. We've also been busy piloting two math technology tools to add into our arsenal to support students and their development of math in addition to their core curriculum. We are trying out iXL and also Dreambox Learning. Both of them are really adaptive, so depending upon how students are answering questions, it will get harder or easier to meet them right where they're at and provide them with a really differentiated, individualized experience that meets the needs of each unique learner. So in the coming weeks, we'll be looking to commit to one of those moving forward as our tool. We really wanted to kind of try out both to be able to compare and contrast. Obviously, when you talk to salespeople, they have really good pitches, but we need to kind of get it in our hands and see how kids feel about it and how teachers feel about it. This week on Wednesday, we will have our third royal recognition assembly where we're recognizing students who have demonstrated great success. This month's theme is with identifying and managing emotions. So there's two students from every classroom in our building who are nominated to receive those awards. And then lastly, we are starting to plan for our kindergarten royal roundup, which is scheduled for February second. We're still working on the time. We are taking two previously existing events, one that was for parents only and one that was a student experience, and combining those. We're working to get more staff involved, so it will really be a really big memorable event, so if people are out... are out school shopping, they'll have a reason to pick us and commit to coming to our school. Any questions?
Excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dimler.
Hello, and good evening. And I'm super excited to share that hot off the presses today is our winter-spring block. It's a few weeks late, there was a delay in printing. But I'm really excited. We have some brand new offerings coming up, so I hope you will check it out. And then we have some classes that have come in after we sent things to print, so we are looking forward to those. One is going to be a co-parenting class we're going to offer to the district in a partnership with the University of Minnesota Extension. So getting that planned for December twenty-first, or I'm sorry, January twenty-first. And I look forward to sharing all this at our advisory meeting tomorrow night. Just a quick update on some of our current programming. Our ECFE ended their fall session last week, and their winter session starts January ninth. And our classes are just continuing to grow. Our Young Royals preschool, we are continuing to grow there. We are now at a hundred and eighteen from the ninety-six we started with in September. We are looking for one long-term sub. And we are busy working on twenty-three, twenty-four with the registration opening January twenty-six at eight p.m. following our open house. And for our childcare, again, our numbers keep growing, so we are excited about that. We will be opening registration for three through five-year-olds for next year, also on January twenty-six, and then the rest of the registration will stagger in March. So we're just keeping busy at community ed. Any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Veal.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and give you some information about teaching and learning. Over about the last month or so, Nick and I have met with the middle school science curriculum, just to kind of give you guys an update on, let you remember, we adopted Amplify curriculum for science last year. So we thought we should get together with them. We haven't hardly heard anything, which kind of made us a little nervous. All right, no news is good news, and that's sort of the way that it kind of panned out. They seem to be really excited about the curriculum. The teachers, so we're teaching that in the sixth and the eighth grade curriculum are the same, as we're kind of making a switch there. And seventh grade is also in the Amplify curriculum. We had staff members who were nervous about the tests and the assessments being a little bit too difficult and too rigorous for us, and they're finding out that our kids are doing well, as they use some of the same pre-tests and post-tests in each of the curricular areas. And again, the themes that they kind of go through in each of the units are to kind of answer a central story as that kind of goes through. So one of the thematic areas was, you know, why are fossils of the mesosaurus found thousands of miles apart when they were a herd animal together? So kind of what plate tectonics and motions and so start to answer those questions. They work on that theme all the way through the unit. So, and that follows very closely with the state recommended phenomena-based push that is coming from MDE as well. So very encouraged by what we have going on there. Also, that curriculum supports a lot of annotation, and the students are reading a lot online and they're writing a lot, and we're kind of holding their feet to the fire to answer incomplete thoughts, full sentences, you know, good flow. So we're going to hopefully see a nice shift in our English and writing scores as time goes by as well. We also met last week with our high school science department. We'll be looking at some curricular topics there. We're examining textbooks now from Houghton, Mifflin, Harcourt, and Savis for right now. Right now, Savis kind of appears to have a little bit of an edge for us. We're going to be getting some materials from Agraw Hill. We're going to try to do some piloting of each of those, as well as work with their online materials, so that we can kind of see, get a feel for both of those, and hopefully have a decision then by our April TLAC meeting. And also, we met last Friday with our ELA group. We've been looking for some supplemental curricular in the area of grammar particularly. That's on the ACT, that seems to be our lowest scoring area over the last several years, so that's kind of where we're focusing. We're also looking at iXL in that area to support some of our students at the high school level as well. And also, a software package called Turn It In. Turn It In is a software package that when students turn in an essay, you can kind of look to see, it kind of does a search of, I don't know, three hundred and forty-five zillion previously published essays to see if there's any plagiarism going on. So that's one of the areas that we're looking at. We also got some sort of bad news in the area of IT, in that there's some new AI software out there that you can just go into a free website and ask a question, and you can have anywhere from a thirty-word or a five-hundred-word essay spit out back at you with no work involved at all. So we're trying to figure out how to navigate those barriers and make sure that we're going to get authentic responses from our kids, let's put it that way.
It's been in the news lately.
Yeah.
It's been in the news lately.
Yeah, it's been in the news. It's been on TikTok, so I'm sure our kids are probably starting to hear about it now. I did check with Brittany. We did a web search, and that website has not been called up on our server yet. So doesn't mean they're not doing it at home, possibly, but hasn't been called up on our servers yet, so.
I heard it's a really good storyteller, like if kids were to...
It's great. I said, "Give me a five-hundred-word essay on Russia versus Ukraine," and it did.
Wow.
It's kind of scary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Gronseth.
Yeah, right. Kind of. Genius kids.
Good evening. Well, I just have really just a few things to say. So this week, I'll be working with the building principals and meeting with the superintendent, where we're going to be starting that conversation about what does next year look like. So looking at our student numbers, we have, we know some of our kindergarteners who will be coming in, you know, will be coming to us, who are on IEPs within our district, and of course, students going from one building to the other. So looking at our student numbers, our staffing needs for teachers and peer professionals, so that we can work with them, with Lisa on that budget part, so you can get that done by March and eventually by June. So starting that conversation this week. We're also seeing, and I think I've mentioned this at other meetings, but we do continue to get a lot of referrals for our early childhood, early childhood special ed. So starting with our infants, all the way up to our toddlers' age group. And so we are still seeing significant effects from the, pretty much a two-year pandemic, where people were putting holes on bringing their children into doctors and doing those well-child visits. We just keep seeing more and more children now being referred who really, in kind of like pre-COVID, probably would have been referred much, much sooner. So staff are working through that and doing a lot of evaluations, and we'll have to see how that impacts our overall numbers for early childhood special ed, and if we have appropriate staffing for that. And then the last thing, what did I just put? Oh, we just continue working with a behavior analyst from Southwest Metro to work with our staff at the elementary school, to work with our special education classroom that is focusing more on students with those emotional behavioral needs. So that is about it for today. Are there any questions or updates? I feel like I was just here, so it's just kind of funny.
No, I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Schuler.
Yes, good evening. The one, just one item tonight, and it was going to be something I was going to share with you, but unfortunately, we left it at the district office. So it wasn't going to be a binder, so I'll use my old elementary teacher skill set here, and I'll show you what we were going to present to you tonight. Basically, this is...
Should we put in a circle so you can...
Yeah, Jim.
First cross, applesauce.
We'll make it very quick. But essentially, what we are going to be sharing with you is the information that we received through our survey summaries, the recent successes and issues that we've had in the district through all those groups that we've met with, some of the vision and priorities that all those groups identified, and then some worksheets for our final session that we'll have with you on January ninth. That's that administrative-slash-school board work session after our organizational meeting. The intent of giving you this in advance of the January ninth meeting is for you to take some opportunities, just to peruse the information that we received, the data that we received, and see if you can find some themes that you see throughout that information. Again, some of the things that are positive, some things that are less than positive that are occurring in the district. So again, just more of an opportunity for you to peruse that. Ultimately, you know, at the level that we get to on the night of the ninth, Mr. Miles will walk us through the same process essentially that the rest of the groups went through. So it'll be identifying those priorities, what those issues are, and then kind of building out that vision of where you see the district going as a board, along with our administrative team. While our administrative team has been a part of almost every one of the processes, they have not done the process themselves, so they're also going to be kind of going through it through the first time. And then again, what are kind of some of the timelines that we'd like to accomplish once we get our plan in that rough draft format. So again, we apologize, we were going to get in your hands tonight. We will get it into your hands before the end of this week, so you have it over the break and for your Christmas time and holiday reading.
Remember, you're still a board member until the thirty-first.
Sorry, he doesn't have a binder.
I'll borrow mine for a couple of days.
But again, you will see some themes, and again, as a board and as a administrative team, it will be up to us now to take it to that next step, which Hunter and I are meeting with Bruce on Wednesday, just for a half an hour phone call, just to kind of solidify what the ninth of January is going to look like. And then he'll be joining us via Zoom, so we'll be in this setting. He'll be up on the screen and walking us through that process as well. So any questions? And lastly, again, just as we've noted, I think tonight was a great testimonial to our students and staff, coaches. Just great to see the students and the success that we had this fall. And again, it just wasn't just this fall. We saw that last winter, we saw it in the spring with a lot of success. It is fun to celebrate that. And again, thank you to those coaches and student athletes for their efforts. It's pretty amazing. That's all I have. Any questions?
Are you watching the weather closely this week?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Henon. Is he in the audience?
Darren's got a vacation.
Yeah, it sounds like it's going to be a fun, a fun weather week.
We're actively watching the weather, yes.
Are there any board member reports?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
Well, Southwest, we would meet tomorrow, but usually, we don't really meet in December, except if there's something going on. But we will have our organizational meeting and orientation, which has not really happened, so that'll become a nice, because we'll have a lot of new board members joining, and that will be on January seventeenth.
Well, before I adjourn, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that it's been a pleasure, Tim. On behalf of really all the students, all the boards, all the superintendents, twelve years, come on. There's been, there's a lot of different people.
That's a lot of superintendents.
You know, I just want to say thank you for continuing to put your hat in the ring, so to speak. And on behalf of all of us, we have a nice little plaque for you, so you can remember us.
I'm sure I won't forget.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
It's been a pleasure being on the board with all you guys. It's, you know, through all of the different board members, it seems like we've always had a really strong board. We may not have always had seven oh votes, but once the vote's done, it's behind you and you move on to the next thing. So I guess I would just encourage the board to continue that. Always vote how you feel and what you feel to be appropriate, even if it's different from the rest of the board. And then again, when it's done, it's done. You move on with what the board has decided. I guess that's really all I have to say. And that, and to thank the public for continuing to vote for me over three terms.
I'm just glad we have you on speed dial, so that we can call you.
You're coming back for the personnel committee, right?
No. Nice try.
They're going to put you on conference call for that.
Phone calls will be screened.
No, again, like Hunter said, on behalf of the district, I know, Tim, we appreciate it, and I know you've been a strong member for twelve years. And as a superintendent, I know having, like you said, a strong board that's willing to work together has been so important. You've been a big piece of that. And also, through negotiations, I know negotiations has been one of your committees that you've been a part of in that personnel side of things, and that's a huge ask for twelve years to be a part of that. So again, thank you for your dedication, and we hope that you stick around and we see you at events and other areas in the district, and don't be a stranger.
Oh, no, I'm still around.
There's always a seat.
You don't want me out there in those seats.
You'll have to check in with me first.
Talk about screening.
And I know your wife's in the audience, you might want to thank her for giving twelve years of your time.
Yeah, I think you guys might want to all thank her. There's been a number of nights where it's been, hey, can we go do that? Let's go do this. And it's like, yeah, I've got a BACH meeting, or yeah, I've got a board meeting, or I can't, we've got negotiations tonight. So, yeah, she's been beyond patient, and I appreciate that. And again, I would say to the board, I think you guys owe her a big thank you as well.
Thank you.
And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
He got his last one in.
And I will second that. So a motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Felt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. End of the adjourning the board's time at seven oh four p.m.
Wait, wait.
We shall take a minute or two hiatus before the truth of tax season.
Current summary of the budget for this school year, presentation of the proposed property tax, and allow for public comment and questions. I am going to first go over... Yeah. The budget for the 22-23 school year. The first column, well, first of all, summarizes our four funds. The first column is the fund balance of the beginning of the school year, which was July 1st of '22. The total revenues of the district was a little shy of $27 million. The expenditures was $32.2 million, and a projected end-of-the-year fund balance of about $7.6 million. I am going to, and the board did approve that budget on the June 2022 board meeting. The next slide is the total amount of revenue divided by each fund. So, you can see that the general fund takes up 62% of the revenues, debt service is 14%, construction is 15%, followed by community service, and then, the food service fund. The next slide takes the five funds, and it shows the percent of revenue of what makes up that revenue, the source. So, the general fund, the majority of our revenue comes from the state, followed by the levy, which is what we're certifying tonight, and then, the federal revenue, and then, our local is the smallest portion of our revenue. For food service, the largest percent of source is our local, and that's because we charge a fee for the lunches and the breakfasts. The next portion is 32% of federal, which is federal subsidies of the food that was served, and then, 4% is the state revenue. For community service, 69% is local, and community service is basically a fee-based fund. 16% is levy, and 17% is state, so pretty equal with the state and levy split. Construction is all local, that's just our interest that we're earning on the amount that we have not spent for our construction. And then, debt service is 92% of levy, which we're certifying tonight, and a little bit of state aid. Okay, the next slide, we're going to talk about expenditures. Again, the total expenditures, it was about a little over $32 million. 62% is the general fund. Construction and debt services are fairly close, 15 and now 14%. Community service is 6%, and food service, again, is the lowest, which is the 2%. And again, the next slide does sort of the same thing as I did in revenues. It takes the different funds and it breaks down what the main expense is. For the general fund, it's majority 68% of salary and benefits, followed by purchase services, and then, the supply debt, supply capital and other are a very small portion of our expenditures. With food service, the main expense is supplies, and then, followed by salary and benefits and the purchase services. The purchase services, we do outsource our food service manager, so that's why it's a contracted service. And then, there's a little bit of capital for the expenses. Community service, again, it's majority salary and benefits, just like the general fund, followed by purchase services, supplies, and a little bit of capital and other expenses. Construction, of course, is mainly supplies, purchase services, and capital, because we're building, we're building in that fund. And debt service, of course, is 100% debt service. The last that I'm going to talk about, the budget, is our district budget publication report. I did have this in the last November meeting, so you should have seen it then, so this is a repeat. It's a nice summary of where we started FY '22, final and total revenues and expenditures for each fund, and then, what the actual fund balance was at the beginning of this year, and then, the budgeted expenses and revenues for each fund. And again, we're going to, anticipation of our fund balance at the end of the year is about $7.6 million. Any questions about the budget, revenues, and expenditures that I have presented? Okay, we're going to hop into property tax and the levy. Little bit of background on property taxes. Property owners pay taxes to the various taxing jurisdictions, which they are counties, cities, townships, school districts, special districts. And you pay your tax to the county where your property is located. And each taxing jurisdiction comes up with its own levy limits and all that kind of stuff. The county is the one that sends out the statements, collects the tax, and then, turns around and gives the tax to the taxing jurisdictions. On the next slide is a little bit deeper dive into the steps. I'm not going to read all of those steps. I did want to focus on, there are seven steps, and really, the school district has to do something in one step. So, the county starts it out, then it goes to the legislation, it goes back to the county, goes back to the legislation, and DE gets involved. And then, we certified our, I mean, we did our first certify in September, and now, we're doing our final certify. And then, at the end, after tonight, I'm going to give the number that we certified tonight to our county auditor. They will figure out the final tax capacity and determining what amount each parcel will be assessed for tax. And then, they will do the collection next year. Thank you for keeping that up, I'm not doing very good.
I know. When I put it down, I kind of, I knew you were not going to...
Sorry. All right, so there's many reasons that your levy amount will change. Here's just a small list of them. The changes in your value or classification of your parcel, that will cause a change. The change in the school district's enrollment numbers, if it goes up, down, that would cause a change. The change in the valuation of the property in the district. So, if your personal property is valued higher or lower, that's going to make a change. Local decisions, so that would be what the school district decides to do, and also, legislation, legislation changes. Couple things to know about this levy that we're certifying tonight. The revenue that we will generate will be for the 23-24 school year. It is a year out. And also, all of the numbers that we are certifying tonight are based on estimates, estimated pupil and estimated dollars, I mean, numbers, expenditures. So, there will always be adjustments made in every levy you certify. The next slide shows what the actual levy is for this year in '23, and then, the previous year in '22, by the three funds that we levy for. You can see that there is a increase of $152,000, and it's about a 2% increase from the previous year, which is fairly stable. Now, I'm going to go through each fund, and every fund has different categories of what they levy on. And for the general fund, it lists all the categories. It shows what we levied last year and what tonight's levy is, and the change. The total increase for Fund One is about 200, a little over $225,000. Most of those are due to the prior year adjustments. Numbers came higher, lower, all that good stuff. The one thing I did want to mention is the reemployment. During COVID, the state did not collect unemployment, so that's why there was a pretty big negative in last year's levy. And then, this year, we're, well, we'll have to pay unemployment again. So, there's a number in there. The next, that's, I just explained all that, so it has, thank you, just words of what I just said. Community service fund, again, shows all the different categories of the community service, last year's levy, this year's levy, and the change. There is a negative change for community service. The main factor of that is the school age care. School age care is one that you, again, you put what you think the expenditures are. If they come up over that, then you have an adjustment. And this year's adjustment was not as high as the prior year adjustment. So, that's why there is a large negative in the school age care. Everything else is fairly consistent. Again, the next slide just summarizes what I just said. And then, the last fund is the debt service fund. I'm sure you guys remember, because I've said it many times, but the debt service is levying for the principal and the interest of our bond payments. So, that is what determines the amount that you can levy for. The state does allow for 100, well, allow, they require that you levy 105% of the principal and interest. So, that's called the debt excess. And they have a formula, so that excess doesn't get too large. So, that is why we have a $39,000 reduction, because our debt excess was getting large, and so, they reduce that, so then, it takes down the actual total amount of levy that is done. So, our debt service is reduced by $15,000 this year. So, the next slide just says what I just said. I just wanted to mention the ag-to-school bond credit. We do receive money from the state for the ag credit. It was enacted in law in 2017, there's been a steady increase. The last increase that's slated right now is 2023, and it'll be 70%. This allows for a reduction for farmers and timber owners. And it's something the state just gives us, so we do not know individual parcels or what the amount is. It's totally done by the state. If you want to see if your parcel does have a bond credit on it, the next slide does show where you can see where that's in, and it's in Step Two. It shows the ag bond credit, if your parcel is eligible. And again, that comes right from the state to the district. The state does have a couple tax refund programs. You would need to contact your tax professional if you want to take advantage of that. And you can also go to the Department of Revenue's website, which is, the website is listed right there on my slide. My last slide is a public comment and questions. If anybody has any questions.
Anyone?
Anybody up here, questions? Okay, then, if there's no questions, I am asking the board to certify our levy. The total amount is $7,791,535.62, which is a 2% increase from the prior year.
Move approval of levy as presented.
I'll second. Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Felton. Any further comments on levy? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Schulte. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned at 7:23 PM.